This conference will now be recorded.
Hey, um, do you have an agenda?
Hello?
Yes, hi, we're just getting a late start because of technical difficulties. All right, ready to begin? Welcome, everybody, to Wednesday, March 9th, 2020 Blackboard here in Town Hall in snowy town. I am Stephen Weiss, the Chair.
Justin Niko present.
John Weingold present remotely.
Jump in if you have a big, we have a big bunch of things on the menu today. Um, all right, town, uh, new business, town inventory items.
For the first three items. The conclusion, so for the appeal for SPR 220363, Public Records Division. Has determined there is no violation.
Thank you.
Um, given that no violation of general law, Chapter 66, Section 10, has been asserted by Mr. Silver in his appeal petition, they are unable to issue a determination. And if he's not satisfied with that resolution, please be advised that this office shares jurisdiction with the Superior Court of the Commonwealth, and he can file that. So on to the next one, which would be SPR 213294 appeal. Based on a conversation between a Public Records Division staff attorney and a town representative, it is their understanding that no recording was created of the meeting that John is looking for, so no responsive record exists, and they now consider this administrative appeal closed. If he's not satisfied with the resolution, he is advised that the office shares jurisdiction with the Superior Court of the Commonwealth. SPR 020, I'm sorry, it should be 220449, public records appeal. Sorry, they again find no violation, and they encourage the party to contact the AGO for a determination on the status of the executive session minutes, and they consider this administrative appeal closed. For the next item, C, I am seeking some guidance on.
E.
Nope, I'm D. D and E are kind of together. So I have a public records request that was made, and I have an elected official, John Silver, who's not providing the documents. As a matter of fact, in response asked, filed a public records request asking for the documents that the other party provided before he will provide anything. So I did reach out to John Levin at your suggestion, Steve. He is not here tonight because he is on a plane, but he did inform me that he is not the Records Access Officer anymore. He only, he was doing it to solve those two or three contentious ones that had been there. He said, you're more than welcome to ask him to remain on. However, he doesn't know if he has that kind of time commitment with everything that's going on. So I know in one of the recent deals that I've gotten, someone mentioned that there was another Records Access Officer. So he, he didn't really help me and kind of left it as I should speak to counsel with all these questions that I have. So I'm seeking permission to contact town council for this one particular issue. And I also think because I'm getting at least two public records requests a day and one appeal a day, I would like to actually have a lengthy conversation with counsel because the requests aren't what they used to be. And I feel like I'm being set up to be tripped up and making mistakes. So I would like to be able to have as much guidance as I can.
So my only question is that. I know I said this a couple meetings ago, and some people said it was false. But for example, there was a records request that I was the custodian of the documents, and I, I forgot, I thought I emailed you with a response, and we had had some back and forth, and I had forgotten to provide a substantive response. I thought I had sent, no, I didn't. Uh, and when I didn't provide the records, the requester made an appeal to the state, right? They make an appeal to the town because this isn't a town law, this is a state law. So to deal with this specific request, I guess if the town should provide as much as it is able to, and if the requester wants to make an appeal, like the Requester made an appeal in my case, when I failed to respond in the adequate, in the appropriate time, then it can, the appeal can go through the state process, right?
So again, I would like to speak with counsel. As far as I understand, but also it's another problem. If I don't have, so for instance, the same person that's requesting the records is also complaining about someone else that didn't respond to a records request, and he's complaining through me. And I just want to know, I have questions, and I want to know maybe what the counsel recommends to you guys for a policy with, with people respond? Or where are we going to keep all these records? You know, maybe you shouldn't be the custodian of your records, and you should be sending me everything. Or like we talked about the other night, about everything should be CC'd to a certain email. Because I just need to talk with him. I can't do it via email, I need to do, I need to like have access to him. But you know, these are just getting crazy, the amount of time that's being spent on these that don't seem to be for transparency reasons.
But my question is, cannot the state office, can we rely on their, their guidance like when we file appeals?
So every time they file a repeal, I have to answer the appeal.
Oh, yeah.
But the state doesn't just take over. I have to answer why I didn't, or someone didn't respond, and then what we're going to do about it.
So but the, it sounds like your questions are not the appeal is.
It's everything. It's almost like I want a little webinar with them.
It's even a lot of the initial ones are getting to an area that seem to be beyond, I mean, they're beyond the realm of, of what we've ever received before. So we need some, we need some guidance. The state, the state jumps in in case of appeal, but for initial, for the initial guidance, I think, I think we need it.
But they don't jump in. So they accept the appeal, and then I have to answer it. So it's, it doesn't just go away because the appeal was made to the state.
But my point being ultimately, who's going to say if what we do is sufficient or not is the supervisor of records?
I believe so, yes.
And so our town council could say, do this, do that, but it's ultimately up to the supervisor of records as. Can you reach out to the supervisor of records and ask?
They aren't here to be. Right, I've been speaking, I have a friend there now. They are not here to be counsel and advise us. The questions that I have, I need to speak to our town council.
Is it my understanding that they suggested that you talk to, that you talk to town council? No? Or did I read, did I misunderstand that?
Um, they have suggested, yes, with, with some of the questions that I have had, yes.
Can I speak?
Oh, sorry, John.
I don't think any advice the town council gives on this matter will override or supersede what the state says. This is controlled by the state, not the advice of town council.
Great advice, then. I'm learning them. And I think you should, that I don't make.
Potential. Adequately with the law, or, or far more expensive than, than getting, trying to get some advice. Believe me, town council won't, or they're not going to, if they, if they have nothing to provide, or they, or they, they end up, they do, then they would say no. But I mean, I have to help, we have to help the Public Records Access Officers do their, you know, do their job. I do, I will, I will agree with Melissa in that they seem to be of, of a nature that is, it almost seems like, yeah, they're looking for, they're looking for mistakes. So let's try, I would try to stay out of those traps by trying to get as much information as possible. I would also, at the same time, ask Mr. Levin, I would, I would make a motion to ask Mr. Levin to come back and, as a Public Records Access Officer, at least until the end of this board session, so that perhaps we can have two, we can have another Public Records Access Officer that actually has some, possibly another insight, that has some more insight.
It's, like, he would take the position, or he would not?
He said you could ask, but he did say that it's very time consuming.
Well, again, we only have, we only have a month and a half to go. Perhaps he'd be willing to come in for a month and a half to try to assist us. You know, we say no, but at least, I'd like to ask him.
Well, I guess what I'm stuck on is all the decisions over records are made by the state. And so they, if, if anyone's going to find us, like you mentioned, Steve finds, it would be the state. And they would tell us what to do, like they always do. They offer these written decisions and opinions on what to do to be in compliance. When, when an appeal is made, they, they, they tell us what to do. So if our council tells us something else, it, all that matters is we do what the state, it's, I mean, I just.
Justin, you're seeing the point. We want to see, if we can process it correctly the first time, then there would be no appeal. So the idea is you want to try to do, and so, so we're looking, I guess Melissa's looking for a little help addressing it initially, so that not, not having to, not having it go to the appeal stage.
So if the fire company were to ask to take some trainings and seek professional advice on OSHA requirements, so that you didn't have a surprise visit from the department that handles that and get fined for it, you would support that, right? Because you'd want them to have all the education and knowledge so that they don't get in trouble. So I'm asking for help by contacting town council to get the extra knowledge and advice that I need so that I don't make a mistake because of the volume and nature of the requests that are coming in.
How many did you give up this week?
Uh, I can't tell you if I haven't added them to my chart, but it's, I, if I had to guess, there's probably been a total of 20.
You got, this week?
In the last two weeks, we'll say, between appeals and public records requests. And 16 of them are all from the same person.
But I mean, the lawyers, they're not going to tell you, you, you don't have to respond to them. I mean, you have to.
I'm not going to be asking that. I'm asking for a lesson, Justin, that's all you need to consider.
So I mean, but what kind of, what issues are arising that you're uncertain on how to respond, I guess?
So why don't you come in, and we'll talk about that, where I can actually. You know what, you have an employee asking you for an educational request. You can either deny it or, or not, I just.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, look, I, I want the town to stay in compliance. My, my intuition is that, or my sense, from what I understand in the public records law, is that the state office is, is who, is who has ultimate jurisdiction and who's going to help us stand compliant.
So why don't we do this, reach out to them? So first, can I make a suggestion, can I make a suggestion? Can I, hello? Can I or you reach out to council and just ask council if, if, or if they would, if they have something to offer to the Public Records Access Officer in the way of training?
Well, and we could combine that with Agenda Item Number 17 for their open meeting.
So I would ask actually, what would be the difference there? Why wouldn't you just have the Open Meeting Lot Division do the training? Because they do it for free, and they're actually the jurisdiction that issues the fines and the, the complaints. So why wouldn't you have the Open Meeting Lot Division give that presentation? They've offered to do.
That's a good point.
It is.
That's a good point. So why don't, I, I, no, point well taken.
So how about I do this? How about I will reach out to the Public Records Division and say, do you offer advice and training to records access officers? And if they say no, then will you allow me to go back to my regular request and, and seek from council?
Yeah, I, I miss.
That's fair. No, we don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, could you, could you do that in writing?
I know, I will do that.
Okay, and, and actually.
But I will tell you that the state is very hesitant to respond in writing. Okay?
But, but also, but I would ask, not just a yes or a no. You ask them, is, is council the person I should talk to? If they say no. Let them, let them make the recommendation to, for council.
Can I ask a quick question? If, if there are 16 requests filed in a two-week period from the same individual, at, at what point does that cross into harassment? And who would be the appropriate person to inquire with the, who would be, would it be the AG here? As to what recourse the town has? Because this, I think this qualifies as harassment. I, I think a case could be made that this individual is filing those requests not for actual information, but for other purposes, and that it's causing damage to the town. The question is, what information does the town have, would that be true? And what would be required to prove that?
Working with that, with the representative there. It's up to. It's up to them to determine it's harassment.
Who's them, the state?
Okay, shall we, shall we move on?
Sure.
Okay. Item number two, native plants working group, citizen petition request attached.
And we have some citizens here.
We represent the Monterey Native Plants Working Group.
Wonderful.
Libby and I, and includes a few other people. So you guys have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Because I'm afraid my copying of the. So basically, we're planning to put a petition, an article on the town warrant in June, and we're trying to get it ready, and we wanted to just run it by you guys. I ran it by the Concom last night, and.
I haven't yet, you didn't sue anymore, because I want to think what the state board had to say first, before I talk to a town attorney.
Libby is also planning on talking to Jim Hunt, because we felt like the, his input might, his buy-in would be important.
And we also need to know exactly what town properties he covers and what he does there.
Okay, so. So my, my overarching comment on the request is, I think it's, it's good in terms of goals. Are there concrete actions? And it sounds like maybe that's where, what you're still working on. But what, you know, with this petition doesn't seem to require any concrete action to promote some.
I think the idea is, by making, by designating Monterey as a pollinator-friendly community, we're setting a direction, an aspirational goal, that, you know, is one that many other towns in Berkshires are embarking on. Six towns that I know of, and there's a meeting toward the end of the month to encourage other towns to become pollinator-friendly. And so, yeah, we didn't want to start with something, you know, penalties and all that, but it's part of a educational and advocacy push to make people understand how important native plants are to the ecological. What the issues are, and how native plants can serve. Go ahead.
And it also does one more thing, if we get efficient designated. Part of other funding from other groups involved with native plants and that's truces.
Yeah, already, for instance, the Berkshire Conservation District has given us a $500 grant to, to bring this to the town. And, you know, our long-term vision includes a lot of stuff. I was just thinking today, wow, maybe we could give away native plant seedlings at those pantry, you know, so people that don't have the means to install native plants could do that on their own.
So it's, yeah, it's, there's a lot of education to be done here. And when I wrote, Steve, you may remember my initial grant going, going way back. Education, public education was a big part of this, that we need to put that out in order to get people back in.
Yeah, and when I was looking at what we were recommending, for instance, cut back on moilage and that, I realized that we might have to try to organize some trainings for the public works group to give them some ownership of this. Why is it important, how they can help, you know? And for instance, like I'm thinking, when they do the restoration from the culvert project, you know, if we can get some good native plants, we're shame there, you know, it just helps everyone with the hydrology, all that.
And then also dovetails with the Conservation Commission, because it's, if the workers put in so many feet of waterway, they want to see native plants going in there.
Yeah, I spoke to them last night.
You spoke to them, you spoke to them.
Yeah, and they, they were very, they totally endorsed it. And they said a lot, some of the stuff is already mandated by the state. But, you know, it's a native plant movement, we're trying to accelerate here.
So generally, it's generally, the resolution is, is to, is to designate Monterey as a pollinator-friendly community, which other towns are doing. But right now, there's really, there's no, I mean, it's just, it's good. Essentially, you're going to work with the public to make a list of suggestions?
Well, here's how I see it, being, offering a little leverage. If the town is doing some landscaping or planting or anything, I feel that based on this, they should consider native plants first, rather than exotic cultivars, you know? And so that, you know, if there's some incredible reason why it can't work, you know, okay.
But even really identifying racist plants. You.
So, so generally, generally, select, you know, make, I mean, we don't, you know, we don't jump into other people's citizen petitions because that's, that's the citizen. Are you looking for what, I mean, our general thumbs up?
We're now looking, we're, we're, this is part of our outreach, to see if there's any red flags. We don't want to get to the town meeting and say, oh, but you forgot this, you know, and we can't do it because of this. So it's just basically to get you on board and see if you see any problems with it, and.
And if it's non-binding, that's really important at this point.
So the only thing, right, so as long as, as long as the things that are here don't, um, don't go against the, the current conservation laws, and I personally don't see anything that raises a concern. You did the right thing, but you went to them, right? Was on there, it was in their public meeting?
Last night, last night, yeah.
Yeah, and you had a discussion in a public meeting with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they said, well, why would anyone be against this?
Yeah, why would anybody?
So, anyway, so, yeah, this is just, we didn't want any surprises to come up at the town meeting, and, you know.
There still will be surprises.
Well, we're trying to do our, our homework and then work.
From, from, no, but I, listen, I think this is, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful, I mean, personal. I think this is, this is wonderful, wonderful movement. All we need to, you know, I myself am trying to figure out a way to, to, to introduce more new species onto my property personally. And again, we do have, we are, we do have two, two versions in town, so the, at least now it's pesticides people use the better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I give you a lot of credit for this, this is great. I mean, again, as long as there's nothing here that, that, you know, that goes against, stays off, I think it's.
And it would be all right if you, if I talk to Jim Hunt about what he covers and just get a feel for what the town issues are.
Well, you're, you're, if we talk to Jim, do not, well, I would, I would wait until the snow, the snow season is over, to see, but he's a busy man now.
Oh, yeah, 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 I thought it was over.
No, it's not, it's not. I'm going to, they might also consider reaching out to the Parks Commission, which.
We have, we, we actually, we're doing, which I guess you guys should know about anyway. We have offered the Parks Commission a native plants garden at city, at Town Beach, and they're welcoming that with open arms, and we've got to do the design, and we're going to incorporate some of the bricks from that old thing there. So, and I just, I just mentioned the petition to ski sort of casually, and said, oh, we're all on board, so, yeah.
Yeah, it actually ties right in with what Lake Galfier Association Committee are doing, what the Conservation Commission do.
And also what I think, I didn't hear Dennis Lynch had applied for a, like, thing for rain gardens and stuff, and native plants are superb for that, because their roots go way down, and, you know.
You talked to Dennis about it, for the, the, the program.
Yeah, I talked to Dennis about it. And he was saying how important work we do. You know, education for all the property owners along Lake Galfier, on the, the downs.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it's providing education very much.
I think it's great, and, and again, I, I think, you know, there are, if there's some, if there's some money out there grant-wise.
We actually got started with a $500 grant from the Cultural Council, and then we got this other grant from the Berkshire Conservation District. So, yeah, as much as we can do, we're into, we've already offered like three or four talks about native plants, and, um, yeah, but he seems really enthusiastic. And, but for instance, I, I asked National Grid, or, I guess, I can't remember who I asked, but I asked about, after they took down these trees on the roadside, do they do any plantings? You know, and I don't actually even know what's appropriate, but maybe at some point we'll be.
The town will have to replant or hold somehow the land along the roads where all those trees have come down with some kind of soil.
The National Grid doesn't do a replanting.
Sorry?
They don't, they don't have a replanting program. They, they planted two, two trees in Monterey.
Yeah.
National Grid doesn't.
But I don't think, believe it.
But what about the town?
Well, you don't have to talk to the tree wardens.
I would talk to Jim.
Okay, so talk to Jim, talk to Jim, these questions are, are.
But at some point, maybe there'd be a way to seed it with the, you know, native seeds or something, or.
That's a big pub, a great, Barrington got a very large pollinator city grant a few years back. I went to a presentation about four years ago on that. And they had grant money to plant along the roadside, to plan and, and, and appropriate. They had three areas of concern. One was public parkland and the road sides. One was agrarian property, and one was private property, providing information to private homeowners. But the roadside was a very big issue, and they got a lot of money for that.
So small steps, so that when you go down roadside, go talk to, go talk to Jim, okay? Because he's the, he knows what you can do on the roadside, what you can't do on the roadside, what will survive, what won't survive.
Yep, yeah, it's an educational process. I, I certainly don't know.
But again, just, yeah, wait, wait until the snow is gone.
And there's also a lot of information at state level, if you know where to go find it. Yeah.
So Libby is one of our technical experts. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I take it we have your support?
Uh, you don't, you don't. Well, so I don't, I don't need to.
You don't need to vote on it.
You have my personal support.
Okay, well, thank you, and get home safely, everyone.
Yeah, be careful out there. Okay. Okay, uh, speaking of this, um, budget review putting, uh, the total budget request in text, response from Lake Arco working group. So I can come into a lot of the budget items in our joint meeting. Was there something else specific?
Well, I think last week we had talked about the Lake Garfield working group's request for fifty thousand dollars.
Did I say that's a good response or not? Sorry.
No, uh, did they make a response?
They did, they basically said what Steve did, that, um, you know.
It's so much easier for me to find on my other computer, if you want to talk about something else really quick, everyone, and grab it.
Uh, okay, so, um, well, is there anything from that, from that, um, from the budget?
Well, one, one thing that got brought up, uh, some time ago, and I think is appropriate for the joint meeting was the suggestion of a two and a half underwrite, but I don't, it seems like it fell off the radar at some point.
Yeah, I I think, I think it really, we have to get to a, we gotta get to a number first. Um, and I think, um, one of the things that we were also looking at is is what, well, now that we have the school numbers, which by the way, you've reviewed, they've gone, well, school numbers always go up, this was, the classroom and school always go up. I think it's important to 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 finalize this, this decision on 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 what kind of COLA that is gonna be given at the next meeting. And then I I think, I think they will be able to segue into whether or not there'll be needs to that. So, um, yeah, so, uh, I guess we're gonna have, at the next meeting, that will be the top of the list, is to try to, is to try to figure out this, this, um, this, this COLA number, because I understand now, now there's a, seems to be a range of of suggestions. You know, the range could be getting larger, not as small, which is not not good.
Well, I, I actually did feel like there was some consensus, because, uh, John recommended three, and we had recommended four, but I had initially began with a range of three and a half to four, and Michelle, I believe she said three and a half, so it seems like it's between three to four percent, where most people fell, right?
Right, so she was gonna, she was gonna look at some documents before she committed her herself to the number, and so, but it sounds like at the next meeting we'll have, um, kind of a firmer impact, uh, or firmer idea. So, um, okay, um.
So, if you're ready, Michael Germain responded that the money will be spent exclusively on DASH in the spring. The amount depends on the survey to be done by Hillary Kenyon, their new lake scientist, which is being paid for by the Friends of Lake Garfield. And if they have Concom approval for the vented barriers and/or mechanical harvesting, then in the fall, if the conditions of the milfoil warranted, they would um use the money towards those methods. And that their contractor for the past years, uh, New England Aquatic, will have all the equipment to do these methods as approvals and conditions.
But they're still gonna have to go through a process, procurement process now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not, not necessarily, even though in the past, it's always, it's always been New England and Aquatic that's been, that had, I think, was the only bidder, but there are two or three other other organizations out there, and usually they don't, they don't bid. But I wouldn't assume that it's, you know, I, I mean, quite frankly, I'm, well, I mean, I tend, I tend to lean towards the, uh, what the original amount is that we've been giving. I, I, you know, in in kind of a general conversation. Again, this is not, you're not gonna win the war, it's just, you know, we're gonna win those battles. I, um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I feel about about testing out somebody else's new equipment, you know, in the way, I don't know, I mean, although I, and although I, and and vented barriers, you know, they do have some advantages and they have disadvantages, because they, they, you know, um, they kill patches, but they, they kill everything else too. So, um, I just interested in where I'm sort of leaning towards.
Weren't the barriers disallowed in the first go around with the state lake preservation?
Um, I'm not familiar with that. I know the lake scientist recommended vented barriers, and I do also think it's important to frame this discussion with the idea that the town is, or has historically resisted using the most cost-effective way to to manage the milfoil growth, which is herbicides. Ken, I mean, Ken Wagner stated in his report that that would buy, that seemed to be the most cost-effective and just generally effective way to deal with it. But to the extent that we don't use that, we have to rely on vented barriers and mechanical harvesting.
Well, they've never, I've actually never used vented barriers or mechanical harvesting in Lake Arco. The only thing that's been used is, has been, has been DASH. And I understand the position of of Mr. Wagner, um, and this position has not changed since, since the first third working, working with it.
So, um, I think, I, I, I thought we were talking about the amount. I guess, to me, uh, if we do recommend thirty thousand dollars to continue doing DASH, it sounded from the report like what we've been doing is not effective. So, why, why dedicate that, that sum if it's not gonna be effective? It seemed like his recommendation was, we either need to get into some more, get into alternative methods, or, you know, or that, or that the DASH may not be worth the money.
So it's by understanding it's not becoming less and less effective, is that, is that there are, there are, there are certain growth cycles when it comes to milfoil. We had one year where, where milfoil died off, a lot of it died off. So you had the same amount of DASH that you killed, you know, almost doubled the amount of milfoil. It wasn't because DASH got more affected, it was because this milfoil was in a, was in a, uh, was in the lower, the lower growth part of it, and now it has been in the upper growth part of it. Remains a consistent push, but the, what you're, what you're, what you end up working with is a growth cycle that sometimes overtakes what you can do with, with just DASH. So you're, you know, so it's, it's, um, so I, um, I got from that, from that letter that, um, uh, that, I mean, they're making recommendations to stand it up based on the accelerated growth of it. However, there's no reason to believe that the accelerated growth is gonna, is, is gonna remain accelerated. So, uh, if this, if, I mean, you know, this board wants to, um, take the, the working group's recommendation, that's, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm, I was just suggesting that, that at a minimum, we would just remain with, with what, uh, with what, with what we were, what the town was paying for, and obviously, it could always be, it could always be changed on the floor. Maybe if there are folks that, that wanna, um, that wanna spend more. You know, you can spend a lot more if you, you know, if you want to. Um, but I do believe that the town does not working with these.
Didn't the Finance Committee already vote not to put it on the, in the budget, three to zero, wasn't it?
Um, so this is the SLACK board, and, um, we're not, and there's some things that the Finance Committee wants to do that we, that agrees to, that we don't agree to, and some things that that we agree to, that they don't agree to. So, um, everybody's, they're allowed to, every, every, every board's allowed to make up their own minds. We could just, if we ultimately decided to put on the warrant, we could just write, the Finance Committee does not approve. Oh, that's exactly how it would be written, it would say, SLACK board approves of this article, and the Finance Committee does not approve of this article. That's, that's, that's how it's been, it's been put in the past, if there's been a disagreement between the two boards. So, um, I, 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 I mean, uh.
Could we, could we continue this discussion next week?
Yes. Let's, let's move it to discussions next week. Um, okay, so, uh, number four, Highway Department Winter Road Watch proposal for weekends.
The, the Finance Committee didn't discuss it yet, so you can table that, because that's what you were waiting for.
Oh, oh, why didn't they discuss, all right, so I moved to table number four until next week. Uh, Highway Two Appointment, Kyle Pettibone.
Um, so Jim and I are recommending that you appoint Kyle Pettibone as Highway Number Two at a rate of twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. Ability to access his one-week vacation after a successful three-month probation.
So my, my only question is, how does this affect our current temporary employee count?
He'll be gone by then.
Okay.
By the time they give his, his notice at his current job, and.
Okay.
This employee will be back.
So they're not, they're not gonna overlap?
My question is, why did he, is he still working for Otis, and why did he leave?
He is not still working for Otis.
He what?
He is not still working for Otis.
Was he fired or terminated, or did he just leave?
He left.
And that's not his most recent job.
Oh, Kyle Pettibone, this Highway Two, for the twenty-four twenty, and, um, with, with this, um, recommendation for, for vacation. Second, oh, yes?
Yes.
No.
Approved minutes of three-one and fifty-two twenty-two. Three-one, twenty-two. Ah, he's in color, so we don't know who said what or why.
That's because only Justin made changes to that one.
Oh, okay.
So typo.
Um, qualified, it's fine. Uh, picked up the answer to the question that Michelle put for her. Fine, the health department has a plan appropriate is. Uh, it's the same. Just twenty-three, five. Uh, I don't know, is there anything?
It doesn't look like anything.
Okay, great, so I.
Other than just the draft twenty-three budget, it's the only document, which is.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to accept the minutes of three-one twenty-two. I know with the joint meeting of the Finance, the Slack board of the Finance Committee, second, oh, yes?
Yes.
John, you were there, are you voting yes, no? Did we lose, did we lose audio?
He's on there. Muted.
What?
He's muted and his camera's off, so you don't know if he's sitting there or not.
Right, can everybody else hear me? Susan, say yeah, nod your head, okay, Phil, nod your head if you. We didn't go completely off. Don Winkle, are you voting on this?
No. This Winkle has abstained from, from voting, um.
Right?
We both voted yes.
We both voted yes.
Should we sign, or it's the same, there were no changes made?
There was, there were no changes made, do we have to sign it, or?
No, it's fine.
Let's go back to three, okay, so this is, uh, three, uh, the minutes of three-two twenty-two. Uh, oh, so I, I meant the people of Ukraine, not the Ukrainians themselves, so I put in people of Ukraine. Um, so can I cross out your Ukrainians? Not that we're crossing them out.
I don't know if that was not my change, my change, you're blue.
That's weird, because there's red changes and purple changes here. Anyway, so let's, I'll cross this out here, and I'm gonna sign it.
Yeah.
Purple. Okay, uh, okay, uh, oh, you're blue, okay, um, most of the plans have information regarding the proposal for next week's meeting, okay, that's fine. Wants to make exceptions here, kind of quick, page four, all involved articles, fine. I, uh, I think number five is added to number four by accents, I, I did that. I changed the word keep to hire, um, that's what we're doing. Um, at up to eight, eighteen hours a week. Motion to make you accept the recommendation, transportation, and post the ad, and give a month to see what response, we didn't, that's what we mentioned, it wasn't in the minutes. Fee convinced, okay, that's fine, Justin, um, so you were number six. In a small town. Uh, yeah, so I, I just filled in what I, what I said. Uh, support of the. Oh, so I, I, yeah, I wasn't clear on that, I, I was, he's here. Speak on support of the, of the proposed salary commission? It says it in, it says it in the minutes, but I didn't remember hearing that, so I crossed it out, but Justin left it in.
I have no recollection.
Are you in favor of a salary commission?
But I think back on it, yes, I did speak in favor.
Okay, all right, so you can put that there, Don, okay, I did, I did, we're done, we have to cross it out. Um, oh, so I, I just had a previous slide board coming on, like, I'm gonna look at working group. Conflict of interest, somebody didn't put up interest. And I, I did mention it's an inclement environment, Justin, currently having L D, wanting to take the recommendations, wanna work with them, that's fine. Uh, L D does not feel that they have, um, effectively controlling it. We work had seen promising, okay, seen promising, that's fine, number eight, now, of course, uh, you know, regarding, uh, Don explains. His opinion, considered his opinion. It should be done in executive session. It should be done executive session, that's fine, just going to keep on discussing this. Just respond, that's fine, Steve LaCroft discussing the. Oh, so I was the mad at all?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify, clarify this today.
Yeah, we had the same, we had the same suggestion, just inquiry by somebody. Steve, I think it was. Yeah, both he and Steve did not think that we were taking the. Tom, you have a question mark?
Taken off at this time.
So there's no question mark, was there? Why is there a question mark there? Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, sorry, it's a question, I see. Listen, I had it. To the agenda, oh, add to the agenda, Don, over justice. Yeah. Communications, which part? Consistency here, that's fine. Justin Stevo, the headler's. Actually, should it be Justin Stevo that agree that town curators should be instead of will be? Now, when I just saw, we were, didn't we say should? Or, I don't know if it, I think it gets across the same point. Until. It's fine. The clause is based on upcoming lease reforms by the state. I added, well, all of the proposed four percent. And higher, all those. So have to be have a negative impact on the taxpayers, Justin agrees that goes one and a half, four percent of the good bill around. And just part of a missing loan certificate. Pulled out, couldn't find it, trip load. Okay, so, um. Sorry?
We used your.
So I, uh, motion to accept the minutes of three, two, twenty-two?
Second.
I vote yes?
Yes.
So that's, that's that, right. Okay, open meeting law complaint filed by John Wijnaldum dated three, four, twenty-two. Hatched, so the, the Select Board received meeting law.
So it seems, it seemed to me like this is a complaint that we received once before. The minutes were not specific enough, insufficiently detailed.
So the.
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple complaints. The notice denied the precise statement of the actual reasons for the two, 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 two executive session. I thought that we had been posting that we were going into executive session to approve executive session minutes. But I'd have to look back at that. Would, would it make sense to just, since this, when was this received? How many business, we already have ten business days or fourteen calendar days?
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen calendar days?
So, um, can I, can I ask a question here? Could they seem to deal about the executive session minutes of two, twenty-two? No.
Two, two, twenty-two.
Except at the beginning, it says the two, twenty-two, twenty-two executive session minutes?
Yeah, but all the, all the references are two, two.
So, my question is this, who was present for the two, twenty-two, two, twenty-two executive session?
John was not present, but.
So, okay, so who, who is supposed to be at, was supposed to be at the two, two, twenty-two executive session meeting? Well, three Select Board members. I'm answering my own question. So when I read this, it sounds to me that somebody that, that one Select Board member, Mr. Wijnaldum, decided not to go to this meeting even though he's on the Select Board and he is, I mean, part of this, part of this board, part of the understanding of it. And so now he's complaining that the minutes are not adequate enough for him to understand what happened at the meeting, a meeting that he was supposed to be at, but decided that he was going to skip it. So my, I mean, it, it just seems a little odd to me. So, and then, and then the, because he skipped the meeting and he doesn't understand the minutes. He's submitting a complaint against the entire board, which actually does include him, even if he just writes Steve Weiss and Justin Makeup. It's really against the moderates of the Select Board. So he's filing, so he's filing an open meeting law complaint against himself and the, for basically not showing up at a meeting and not understanding in his mind, what went on in the meeting that he was supposed to be at. I, I mean, I, I think, I think the, the open meeting law division, and I, I, I want to be part of, I want to help craft the answer to this and we can, we can certainly take a little time to do that for the next meeting. But I think part of the answer has got to reflect the fact that you had a Select Board member who is making a complaint about, about a meeting that he was supposed to be at, that decided he didn't want to be at a meeting. And for some reason, didn't feel the detail was enough for him, but, but had he shown up at the meeting, then he would have been privy to, to the vast detail of this particular meeting. So I don't know, it just, it just, it seems a little, seems a little pretzel logic-y to me. I don't know, Mr. Coburn, you have more legal experience than I do.
I think there's a worse, since you mentioned my name, is a worse problem here.
What's that?
And that is that apparently you take your executive sessions and he must have come in and listened to the tape. I, I don't know whether it was right or wrong for him to do that since he wasn't at the meeting. But in this complaint, he actually described things that were said in the executive session. He talks about, um, well, the last three lines, I don't, I don't want to even read them publicly. But you can see that he's describing things that were said at that meeting. That's, it was supposed to be a secret meeting. And him putting it in this complaint is a serious question. I don't know whether it's for the ethics part of the state or the open meeting law part of the state, I have a feeling it may be the ethics part, but that, that's pretty serious. You two are having an executive session in private and the third selectman listens to it and then decides to put the content or some of the content of that meeting out to the public. This is out to the public now. It goes online. That strikes me as a very serious breach of the executive session that should be attended to.
Do you think we should designate a respondent or each?
I think you should ask counsel.
No, I was speaking.
Oh, sorry.
Do you think that we should designate a respondent or each?
Well, I'd be happy to try and craft a response. With the board's permission, I, I would, I'd just run it by counsel because Mr. Coburn does bring up an interesting point. I don't know, I don't know if it's an ethics, but it's certainly, certainly the violation of the open meeting law. If you're posting executive session minutes. So imagine that, it's a, it's a, it's an open meeting law complaint that actually may violate the open meeting law by somebody who should have been at the meeting, but decided not to be at the meeting, but is complaining and he wasn't at the meeting because he didn't, he didn't know what's going on. I, you know, if you live along, long enough, you get to see everything. It's interesting. So, Justin, with your, with your permission, let me, can I, can I at least seek guidance of counsel and make an effort to draft a response?
Yeah, and, and it seems to me that, um, well, one question is whether the meeting was properly posted, that would be good to get an opinion from counsel on.
So, was the meeting properly posted?
Well, I don't know, you just have to give them the agenda and explain, like, look, I, I think it was, which is why I went into the executive session, but I would ask that to counsel and, um, and then also whether, um, what, like, I guess ask count, if you can give count, tell, tell them so what the situation is and ask what remedial action we can take to come into compliance if we're not.
Yeah, there's, there's, wow, this is actually, um. Wow. Okay, then. So, um, the other question is this. I, I don't know, I don't really answer this, so the minutes in question took place on two, two, twenty-two? Do you have, do you have thirty days, do you have thirty days? Or is it thirty days from the release of the minutes?
Thirty days for what? About something that occurred. Well, it'd be, this would be the approval of the minutes, I think, which we approved them at what, two, twenty-three or two, sixteen?
Was that what it was?
Yeah, that's why it says date of violation two, sixteen. Which was the approval.
So you must file the complaint with the public body within thirty days of the alleged violation.
And so the alleged violation is the February sixteenth approval of the February second minutes.
I see. Which Mr. Wijnaldum was not at that meeting either.
I think he actually was at two, sixteen, February sixteenth.
He, he sixteen?
Oh, yeah, man.
Yeah, he was.
I believe, I could be wrong.
He was present remotely.
Oh.
So. Would you?
Yes.
And then, I guess, write a response and see if we need to take any remedial action if we are in violation?
Can I come on? You know, the, the relief for failure to properly post is that whatever action was taken gets set aside if you posted a meeting. He's not asking for that relief in his, in his request. So whether the notice was properly given or not is not, is not relevant because he's not asking for the whole thing.
For that remedial action. Well, and he, I guess where I got confused is it's, it's mentioned in the description of the alleged violation, but it's not mentioned in the what action do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint. I mean, and one of his requests is to start doing your own minutes. I mean, another thing is demand is mediation, and I know that mediation is, is available after what, four or five complaints? Right? Am I wrong?
Automatic, they had, it's something like that.
So listen, I, look, I think, I think mediation is a great idea, but the first question I would ask mediator is what happens when all of, when, what happens when you have one board member who only shows up for one-third of the meetings? And then, and then files a complaint about meetings that he, that he was not at? That would be my first question, is the mediation, I'd love to get the answer to that.
Well, except that, I mean, the fact of the matter is that our, whether or not we violated the open meeting law is not dependent on who's filing the complaint. It's just dependent on whether or not we violated the open meeting law, so.
Okay, well, let me reach out to counsel, I'll send a copy of this document. And, uh, and then we'll, we'll see, we'll see what, uh, we'll see what happens, but we do have, we do have a little time, right?
By the way, so you're attaching a record of, of your, your meeting and sending that to the open meeting law people? That, that's a violation of the open meeting law.
Just to be clear, I did not provide him with that audio. I would just like to state that for the record.
I think that's in public minutes posted to the public.
No, the executive session audio.
No, but I mean, when we, or when.
Well, how could he have access to it?
The audio was distributed, um, yeah, I thought that's a minutes posted to the public, no? February twenty-third or February sixteen?
He concluded a copy of the executive session recording of two, two, twenty-two.
He sent it to the, to the open, to the meeting law division.
I just wanted to make clear that I did not provide him with the audio of that executive session.
I think we agreed that, that obviously that you can, you could have the, he could listen to, to, to the recorded minutes, but there was no agreement that he could distribute them.
Yeah, so what, what's on the February sixteenth minutes posted to the public is John asked Justin for a copy of his personal audio recording of this meeting. Justin agreed to send his audio recordings of the executive sessions to John and Steve. Which I was of the understanding that because it was people on the Select Board and it was a Select Board matter that and anyone, that that was okay. And if I.
Right, so, so, however, however, we did not give him or anybody permission to distribute it.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't do that, I just, I distribute amongst the board.
Yeah, that, that's the point, that's the point.
I, I think the, the bottom line, most essential question though is, are you satisfied that your minutes as you drafted them met the, what the requirements of the open meeting law? Or does he have a point that would make you reconsider and add something to the minutes? If you decide that the minutes were exactly what you wanted and that they meet the law, then you should just tell that to him.
So, so I only received this complaint yesterday. So I haven't had time to go back and, and look at the approved minutes and, and the recording. But we did face this, uh, similar, uh, complaint before and all we did was we went back and made the minutes more specific, uh, which is, uh, I think a, a fair request. So I will take, that's another thing, if you're going to draft a response, I'll go back and.
Why don't you go back, take a look at the minutes and see what's, what, uh, what is the. Because the idea is, you seem to have, says he does not have a clear understanding. And I'd be more than happy to read those notes again and listen to the, listen to the audio.
And then if he wants changes, yes, do that in the executive, in the executive session where he presents the changes that he wants.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Let's, let's move on, shall we?
Wait, sorry, is it fourteen calendar days or fourteen?
Okay.
I'm sorry, fourteen business days, which usually comes out to be, um, fourteen business days usually twenty to twenty-two calendar days.
I'm going to figure out what day that is.
Well, it's probably, we probably have a couple of weeks, that's the gist of it, probably. Or at least one more week.
Yet to the sixteenth would be fourteen business days.
To the, to March sixteenth?
Oh, we filed on the fourth, sorry. It would be a little longer than that, yeah. Yet to the eighteenth.
Okay, so, um, eight-day review and mail and correspondence dissent of the meeting law determination, so we received a response from the AG's office regarding the, um, the emergency session that, um, took place, what, May?
On June first.
What? June first. So, um, John Silbert, um, um, put out a open meeting law complaint against the, against the, I think, Justin or the select board or everybody, um, stating that the, that the emergency session was not, um, was not appropriate or proper, properly done, and it seems that the, um, that they, that they say that it, um...
The conclusion?
The conclusion of it is, is that for reasons stated above, we did not find the board violate, the board did not violate the open meeting law when it held a session on June first as an emergency did exist, or existed, which justified posting notice less than forty-eight hours in advance. You now consider the complaint addressed by determination, by this determination resolved. Okay, so there we go. Don't have to go through the vlog. The next one is Gary Shaw's email attached, um... Yeah, uh, Gary seemed to, um, be concerned that, that his, um... That his discussion, it was a discussion about the, the clerk and, um, uh, about, about minutes, about, um, sorry, public records, that, um, that a public record access officer was trying to, came from the clerk, and, uh, some form of information.
So, um, so one, one, my, I guess, general response is, as long as we are recording and, and posting our meetings, we should absolutely have, and we're required by law to have minutes that are accurate to our meetings, um, but the, the YouTube videos also serve as, uh, you know, a form of transparency, so not every comment will necessarily be mentioned in the minutes, but we're not trying to hide it, it's all, uh, it's all publicly available. And, uh...
Yeah.
That's, I think, one of the nice things about recording the meetings is that, you know, it's, it's all, it's all out there, uh, and, and the minute should still be after, uh, and it has to be according to law, um, but it...
So, okay, so, um, uh, yeah, and, and it seemed like both of them referred to the fact that, that I, um, that I moved on from the conversation. So I, I wanna, I wanna publicly apologize to both of Mr. Mr. Shaw and Mr. Levin if I somehow, um, cut them off. I, I was not, I'm the understanding that anybody had anything substantive to, to say, um, when I did move from, um, from this item to the next item. I'm, I'm happy to, um, certainly if there was something said in the minutes that are missing, you know, um, I would be happy to have that discussion with people, um, I don't need an open meeting law complaint to, um, to have, uh, the board does not have to have that open meeting law complaint for us not to address it, um, so, uh, but unless I'm reading this wrong, um, really, it seems that Mr. Shaw's question is that he didn't get a chance to ask, ask a question, and Mr. Levin actually refers to the same question, I didn't get a chance to answer Gary Shaw's question. So...
Well, Gary, Gary Shaw was asking a lot, his, his statements were not included in the minutes, and I think this probably goes along the same way with, um, John, John's open meeting law complaint, uh, I, I'm happy to return to the video and compare it to the written minutes, and I can do that by next week to see if any statements by Gary Shaw or John Levin should be added to the, um, three, to, to this meeting. On the upswing, these are both documents included in this meeting, and so they will all be publicly available, and we're not hiding anything, uh, on purpose.
Okay, good, see if you can, if you can...
But I'll see if we wanna edit those minutes for next week.
We are more than happy, would it be fair to say, uh, the statement as a board, we are more than happy to, um, amend minutes if, if the public feels that we've missed something?
So I can pers, I can personally do that for next week.
Okay, good. All right, so, uh, considering you're appointing a salary commission.
So, we talked about this last week, and Steve, you, you spoke to HR position, we just read those minutes, and, and I, and I hope that the HR position can help us with, with salaries and compensation. This was initially based off of a specific request for the transfer station, um, by the transfer station committee to review, and they didn't ask for the creation of a salary commission, but they asked for the finance committee and select board to review salary. And one issue that you brought up is people are oftentimes connected to this employee or that employee, and, for example, I would have to accuse myself, uh, a number of employees, and the idea behind a salary commission is if we could find some, uh, people who are interested in statistics and are not, not involved, then maybe it could take a more impartial, impartial, uh, look at it, and I think part of the reason I add this again is because I, I felt that what Jim did with the highway department and with Melissa's, with Melissa, and look at how to maintain competitive wages for that department, it is a, is a good thing to do, and I think some departments, that may be difficult, especially maybe there's only one person in, in the department, and they don't have a supervisor to look out for their wages, um, and it, and it may not mean the same if they come themselves to the board and say, this is a competitive wage, wage for this job in Berkshire County. So I thought the salary commission would be one way to do that, and if we could find people who weren't involved, it would remove some of the problems we have by having our own employees do it, or the select board do it, or the finance committee do it. Like you said, those individuals may be hard to find, but I think that would give us the best shot at doing it, uh, kind of impartially.
So, okay, let me, let me just make sure of comments. So, um, are you on the, on the Google group, the Google community group?
I have been on a lot of it.
So, this past week, two very well-meaning people started to have a, a small dialogue about the salary for the, for the, for the transfer station, did you read the dialogue? Might I suggest, if, if you don't, um, I can, I can, I can forward that to you, but basically, it was two people talking about their, their opinions of salaries of, of the transfer station, and, and that was exactly what I was concerned about when, cause, and they're two, again, two really well-meaning people, but didn't, but, but in my opinion, they were having a discussion absent kind of a general under, understanding of, of what, of what's, of what's happening, um, they were making some good points, but they were, it was base, it seemed to me, you know, I mean, anyway, it was, it was a discussion, it seemed a little, um, uh, I, 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 I wist when I read it because it was like discussing some salary, and I understand it's a public, you know, because the, the, it was the ad, when the ad came out, it mentioned the, the offering, the offering rate, and so, and obviously anybody's willing to, anybody can mention, you know, can talk about what they think, whether they think it's good or bad, but, um, it, when it comes to people's salaries, you know, people are very passionate, um, and, uh, um, you know, and have some specific ideas, and, and can you imagine people debating these, these salaries on a, on a, you know, on the, on the, on the Google groups? And it seemed to be a little disconcerting. The other thing is this, currently, until we do get an HR person, we, we can only, um, or most of it, most of, most of the departments come up with a flat, come up with a flat number. It's hard to, it's hard to go to one department and say, help, um, Jim's specific recommendations, the highway department, um, uh, is one of the largest, uh, is, is the largest department, expenditure-wise, and kind of moderate other than the school. So, um, so, uh, so, so that, so that discussion, you know, made a lot of sense, but, but generally the reason why Monterey's been kind of flat of doing it is because, is because, um, the, it's hard, it's hard to make specific, to make specific changes for certain, for certain groups, and then if you, if you do have it, if you do have a salary commission, you're gonna add another layer of, you know, well, we think X number of department is being underpaid, we should pay it more because other departments are being paid more, fine, then we, then we have to, we have to have a meeting on it, we have to bring them in, it, it's, it is going to be, it, it's gonna add a, a lot of, a, and if there is, if there, if there is an HR person, then they would, at the same time, be having a discussion about merit pay, which is one of the reasons why we wanna have an HR person is to discuss merit pay. You cannot have a discussion about merit pay and have a salary commission at the same, at the same time unless the directive is for the salary commission to have a discussion with the HR person, and I don't know, I don't know how that's, how that would possibly work.
I understand, I understand the principle. And in my viewpoint, the salary commission is more to focus on the position and rather than the, rather than the person filling it, and so you compare job descriptions between different towns and see, and, and maybe depending on the position, what people are making in, in the private sector, and that way we're, we don't, we remain competitive, we don't lose good people, and we attract good workers, and, uh...
But if somebody is making a, I'm sorry, a...
No, I, I have a question, I'm wondering if Justin has made a motion to appoint a salary commission or not.
No, I have not, and, I mean, it would be, uh, it would be a process like we've done before where we would advertise, what I would envision would be advertising for maybe a month, and, and then reviewing applications and going from there, so wouldn't it be immediate, and it wouldn't affect this budget? And it would be, for me, it's, it's more of a long-term solution.
Do any towns in, in, in South County have a salary commission? Does Brady Barrington have a salary commission? Does Edgar Mont have a salary commission?
I don't know, I could, I could look into that.
What, can you, can you, can you make a determination before we, you know, before we move this discussion forward to find out if, if other towns do have a salary commission?
Justin, just make the motion, please. Don't let Steve talk you out of your, the salary commission is in the bylaws, you can't just ignore bylaws. Make your motion, it, it will get seconded or not?
Not a bylaw.
It's not a bylaw, John. It is not a bylaw.
So, it is my understanding, um, I guess, because the thing is, it's not, it's not an urgent, it's not an urgent matter, uh, it's, it wouldn't affect this budget process.
Why don't you bring us up to the, to the next, why, what, why don't you bring it up to the next board? It doesn't, it's not, it's not gonna impact what's currently going on, um, perhaps the next board will, will have a, uh, direction.
Just make the motion, please.
If you wanna make a motion, I mean...
Listen, nothing has to be, well, you can do whatever you want, but, nothing's, nothing's gotta be done now, I don't, I personally don't think it's a good idea, I don't know of any other towns that, that do have a salary commission, and you're gonna, um, you, um, there's a, there's a possibility, and we'd like to find out once, if, if in a, hopefully in about a month, there'll be a, an HR person that's hired from this group or a month or two, and the first thing I would ask the HR person is, what, you know, what, what services do you offer to the town? How would this work in conjunction with the, with the salary commission? If the HR person says, listen, there's no problem, the next board can vote it in. If the HR person says, is that only gonna, gonna neuter my ability to, to do, um, individual merit pay, then it's not a good idea, so...
I guess I'm not, I'm not counting on, uh, I mean, I, I think the shared HR director would be great, and I'm hoping for one, but I guess I'm not counting on it. But what if we, what if we just advertised the salary commission and saw if there was interest? I don't know if anyone would want to serve on it, on that, on that commission or not.
Everybody's gonna wanna talk about other people's salaries, it's gonna be the juiciest gossip in town.
Well, I mean, it's all publicly available information, it, but you'd have to sit down and go town by town with numbers.
We also don't have a charge for them, you know?
What?
You don't have something written out.
Oh, well, I was gonna go based on the not bylaw charge.
All it says is to create a salary commission, isn't it?
No, it mentions, it mentions to review salaries, it also mentions to open job descriptions.
What do you mean, it's a bylaw, not a chart? It is a bylaw, right?
It's not a bylaw.
It was never written as to accept a bylaw, it was a suggestion to create a salary commission.
In nineteen seventy...
Something.
Four.
Well, and my understanding is the bylaw review committee is also fleshing up some of those issues.
I, I don't, I don't know what...
I'll do more research and, and... Well, I, I guess part of the reason I wanna push to, or part of the reason I put it on for now is because the transfer station committee suggested that we look at people's salaries and compensation, uh, having the select board and finance committee do it, and they suggest having the select board and finance committee to invite certain, uh, issues, and then I thought what Jim Hunt did with his department was good, and I want that to be implemented on a wider scale.
So, one was on by the department head, Jim Hunt, okay, who knows what's out there, okay? The other one was suggested by the transfer station committee, right?
Yeah.
A committee, all right? And their recommendation was to offer less than what we're currently offering, um, so, so not, I'm not saying that their, 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 their suggestion was wrong, because we're, we're gonna see, but the, the whole point of it is, is that, um, if, if, if you try to, if you extrapolate the fact that a committee just offers to pay less, I don't, I don't, so I don't understand how, you know, how, you know, how that would work in other, I think Jim's, I think...
Weingold's is left, just so you know.
Oh, okay, please let the record, the town Weingold has decided to boycott the remaining of minutes of meeting, seven thirty-two, perhaps he will come back when he returns from his out-of-country trip.
Steve, I, I just wanna, I, I wanted to put a, a mention in of what I understood the transfer station committee to mean was that we felt, um, that, what I think everybody already knows was that period, one has to assess the complete value of the, uh, package one is offering all of one's employees, to ensure that they are being compensated appropriately for the current economic situation and in accordance with what's happening. for the current economic situation and in accordance with what's happening and with similar jobs elsewhere. We were not saying we, anything with regard to whether we thought they were being properly paid. We just think it needs to be periodically evaluated to make sure that their compensation is in fact appropriate, which it may or may not be. So we, we didn't say that we thought they should be paid anything in particular, just that it, we thought it ought to be looked at.
That's fine, I, I apologize if I made it sound differently. I'm just, I guess the point, I wasn't trying to, I wasn't trying to derive your group.
Oh, I know.
The net result of the group, of the group, you know, there's no guarantee that we're going to, we're going to get somebody because of that suggestion, right?
Right.
And the group even. That generally, when it comes to salaries, that's why there are, most of these towns, I would say, don't have a salary commission. Because when it comes to, when it comes to salaries, it's, it's, you know, it's hard, it's hard for a group of people to affect what should be paid. And anyway, and, and especially if you're going to go in and review existing salaries of people that are working and working happily, you're going to go in there and you're going to say, you know, listen, I like you. You know, I like their style, I, I think you should be paid more. I don't know, anyway.
And I currently track this information. So when we do get an HR person, if the salary by law is, that person will be working on updating all the job descriptions and then to, and, and we would work on, you know, making sure that the comparisons are accurate. It's going to fall.
So, so Justin, I'm not, I, 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 I promise I'm not beating you up. If you take up beating you up, I apologize. I'm not, I'm not beating you up, just in view of my experience. Just based on my experience and I'm not right all the time. So can we, can we move that to another? Feel free to put it back, keep on putting it back on the agenda. We can keep on having discussion about it. But first, I would say, yes, please first find out how many towns have one of these things. That's the first thing. Actually, with any of the things that we try to do here in Monterey, I know it sounds like a cop out, but it is, it is always a good idea to say, all right, let's see what these other towns are doing. Let's see the ones that are approximately our, our size. Considering appoint, appointing a swap shop committee. You know, I'd like to protect that.
So the transfer station committee recommended that we appoint a swap shop committee to ensure, you know, smooth operations of the swap shop. And I would be open to it. It seemed like when the issue was raised, a lot of people were interested in the swap shop and in making sure that it stays open. Susan, you want to fill us in on any particular discussion that the transfer station committee had about a swap shop committee?
Essentially, the concern is that it's hard for new incoming people to actively interfere for the swap shop, which is very beloved and rightfully so. There was the impression that a number of people had expressed interest in volunteering at the swap shop. And we thought that if that could be codified in some way and a committee or group set up and people asked for it so that there could be a steady flow of volunteers, that would be a great thing. It would be a way to get people actively involved in the community. Well, I think it's a net positive. We're also reaching out to Bull Farm, to, anyone from Bull Farm might be interested in participating in that. But I, I think it's a great thing, but it would be set up that people could do it. Did that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. So they would, they would handle, like, getting, getting people there, I mean, getting people to work there, like, on a volunteer basis. They, they do scheduling and inventory control and things, things that norm. That, that that was kind of doing, but.
The draft I have is just the swap shops committees' mission is to ensure smooth operations of the swap shop, especially by designating staffing for the program at all hours when the transfer station is open.
Sounds good.
That's me, I thought, Susan, when we all met, that the committee was actually going to be working it. So that, to me, isn't clear that when you're volunteering, you're volunteering to work up with the transfer station.
Um, so that's a good question. I would have said that we were suggesting a committee be set up to make sure there are volunteers. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure how that works in a town, but, you know, when I've worked as a parent at various schools, when there's something that has to be organized, there'll be a committee and the committee members often volunteer at the actual event, but they also are responsible for getting additional people that aren't the organizers to volunteer as well. So there might be a committee of organizers that's six people, but you might actually need 30 people to volunteer. So, does that make sense?
It does, it just, that wasn't my impression when we left the meeting. It was more of an auxiliary committee where the people would actually be working it themselves if you were on the committee. Like, you'd be.
Well, I think they'd be more involved in too, but there may want to be involved in organizing, but would volunteer for some shifts. And. And they'd be more than welcome to volunteer for actual shifts, but it'd be good if there was some leadership, if there, if there was some leadership behind that operation.
Yeah, it'd be that it would be, right, not everybody who's on the committee would necessarily work at the swap shack. Or we call it the swap shop, whatever it's called, that it would be a kind of group of people that would, that would try to put together a, a group of volunteers. Some of them could be members of that committee. Some of them don't have to be. But I would also, you know, but in, in addition to staffing with volunteers, they would also, I, I think the committee needs to also be responsible for, you know, you know, the, the operations themselves of that swap shack because as far as, you know, inventory management and what have you. Because I, I don't think, I, I think if they want to take, they want to take ownership of it, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot more than just being there. You have to, I mean, if you ask best, you got to make sure things are moving and if they're not, make sure there's space on the shelves. And you had a whole method to taking sure that the place, you know, and, you know, something that's, people are not taking it, there's some point you're going to have to dispose of it. You know, so the idea is you got to, you know, so there's, 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 it's, it's a, a, it's a whole, it's a whole, it's, it's, it's more involved than, than just kind of being there. So, and I would think that that would should be the committee to be left to the transfer station person. If we're trying to remove that part from the, you know, from the, from the calculus. I mean, they will manage it, they will supervise it. But, you know, if you really want to get some folks to take ownership of it, they got to do the whole thing. So I would, I would expand your, your, your description a little bit, or.
And I just want to add that anybody that volunteers up there is going to need to sign a waiver of liability and end the agreement as recommended by your insurance company. So I don't know if that changes your mind about seeking volunteers. They're not covered under Workers' Comp if they happen to get hurt up there like that did.
Well, I mean, I think that would be up to individual volunteers. I would imagine.
And one might want to put something in there that'll give people, so they know before they, you know, volunteer what's going to be required.
Well, we would have to, so we would, so, so we would formulate this. Look at me, I'm form, I'm formulating a committee over here. You formulated a committee and, stop me, stop me before I get to, no, no. But we have formulated a committee, but, but the, but the, the, what the vol, you know, what, what the volunteers will have to do is, you know, the policy for the volunteers is going to, something that's going to have to come out of the board, the select board, just for liability sake. Just like, you know, I mean, so they're, they're essentially, they would essentially be involved in, in, in searching for volunteers, educating the volunteers as to the operations of the, the swap shack, managing, including managing the, the inventory and being, and, and, and working under a liability waiver.
Something like that. Yeah, this would be my mission, my draft, which is slightly changed. But I think the idea would, they, they would focus on all things swap shop, but it kind of recognized that staffing is going to be a big concern. The swap shop committee's mission is to ensure smooth and efficient operations of the swap shop in all aspects, with a primary focus on designating staffing for the program at all hours when the transfer station is open.
Okay, the only other thing that I would put in there is, would, would be something where, you know, it's understood that smooth and, smooth and efficient operation of the swap shack under the supervision of, of a, of the transportation manager and, and director of highway operations and the select board. In other words, just so that it doesn't sound like, well, it's going to be your own, your own deal. Okay.
How about the swap shop committee will work under the purview and in coordination with the select board, the town administrator, the director of operations and the transfer station staff.
That's a lot of people to work in coordination with. I think it should just be the director of operations and myself so that you don't complicate things and work.
Well, the, well, the.
Well, I talked to Justin and he said this, but then, oh, I talked to Melissa and she said this.
Actually, that's fine, that's funny, if, if, Justin, if you got a, if, the committee of town administrator and the director of highway operations, I mean, it doesn't have to be necessarily the select board. The only, the only reason I made mention of the select board is if we, if we have a policy that's going to affect that, then we're going to, we would do it through the town administrator as well, anyway.
But what about the transfer station staff? Because they will have to work directly with them when someone comes and says, should I put this in the swap shop or not? And so they will have to work directly with the transfer station staff.
Oh, under the, yeah, the supervision, because the, the transfer station, well, the director, really the director of operations is the, is the manage, is the, is the management of the, of the transfer station.
And if it's working the way it should, when you come in with your trash, the transfer station attendant should tell you if you can tran, if you can dispose of it or not, or if it's something that can go in there.
I know, but let, let's say for, this is going to be a weird example, but it's the only person who popped on my, my line. Let's say somebody wanted to, you know, to sell a, to sell a, to, to put a, to bring a gun to the swap shack. Now, I just want to swap this out, leave it in the swap shack. It's going to have to, the transfer station manager or the director of highway, highway operations is going to have to say, no, you can't do that. Or I'm going to take, you know, that's a bad example, but just anything that's, that's not, you know, that, that may be injurious to the general public.
Read it. The swap shop committee's mission is to ensure smooth and efficient operations of the swap shop in all aspects, with a primary focus on designating staffing for the program at all hours when the transfer station is open. The swap shop committee will work under the purview of the director of operations, select board and town administrator and in coordination with the transfer station staff.
Perfect. And, and is there, is there a period of, we're going to, we could put in a, a number or a, or a, or a?
Or if we have a appeal applied by March 31st, given to the end of the month?
Wouldn't this be something you'd want in the April Monterey news?
Yeah, so I'm going to the end of April.
Because I'd be rushed to.
Put it to the end of April.
End of April? Now we're talking. What about April?
Well, the Monterey news.
11th.
Two weeks?
No, that's.
I thought you wanted to get the cream of the crop for that.
But it's not because you were putting it in the April Monterey news. They're not going to get it till like April 5th or 6th.
Okay.
Well, you think that's too much time? You're, you're, you seem to be very hard on getting this, this, how about to the?
18th compromise. I'm fine with whatever.
You know, well, listen, let's give them, give them until the, give them until the 20th and then we can make our, we can make our assignments at that, at the 20th, the select board.
Well, that's why I do it on the 18th, so that way we know a few days in advance who we're considering.
Fine.
And how many people are you looking for? So that we have that settled.
Five.
Five. Okay, so are you going to make, so you make this motion?
Motion to create a swap shop committee with the following mission. The swap shop committee's mission is to ensure smooth and efficient operations of the swap shop in all aspects, with a primary focus on designating staffing for the program at all hours when the transfer station is open. The swap shop committee will work under the purview of the director of operations, select board and town administrator and in coordination with the transfer station staff. And there'd be five members. We'll advertise until, we'll, we'll accept applications until April 18th, 2022.
Just so I'm clear, are you looking for the appointment application or an actual job application?
No, I think I'm saying the appointment.
I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, the appointment? Oh, yeah, no, the appointment application for the committee, not, not, not for the job itself. They're going to vet, they're going to, anyway, they'll do this first. So, so given the fact.
Do you approve of that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I seconded that motion. I go, yes?
Yes.
We created a committee, so go, so, okay. So, given the fact that, so articles 11 through 19 have opened on the, have all been put on the agenda by John Winkle. Mr. Winkle has chosen to leave the meeting and therefore, I believe it is, it is perfectly, perfectly allowable to table, to make a motion to not to discuss these, these, these items. Mr. Winkle is free to put them back on.
I would.
However, however, I would like to have a brief discussion with regard to item number 16.
All right, same for me for 15.
Okay, yeah, so that's, we're going, so we're going to table, we're going to remove all these items. We're not, 11, 11 through 19 with the exception of 15 and 16 and we will have a discussion on 15 and 16. All right, so let's, let's go to 15. All right, preliminary discussion on annual warrant articles that the select board wants to be added to the warrant.
Well, I didn't actually have any articles in mind, but I didn't know if you did.
No, I don't.
I just want, if there were any ideas, then I want to discuss them sooner or later.
It was a fake out, okay. No, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily have any.
It'll probably be more helpful once you see my draft than something might trigger.
So perhaps we'll have this.
Do you have any warrant articles to add? I mean, other than the budget and the special articles or? Like no increase in the number of the select board or anything like that?
No.
I believe, if I had to guess, I believe there are 20 citizens petitions that are currently being written as we speak. As a matter of fact, I can hear the pencil scratching during the meeting. So, but as a board, I think, I think it's our, our job to try to get through just to get, get a good budget passed. And, you know, citizens are, are, do the, do the job. As for, oh, are we done with 15?
I don't know.
Okay, as for 16, the only thing that I want to.
What's 16? I just want to have it in front of me.
Well, the, on the agenda, it says discussing some desist letter to citizens contacting the town's investigators what impact these contacts have on the investigation and request the status and request a date on the investigator's report. So I'm not really sure what the first two sentences mean. So I'm not really sure what the first two sentences mean. It's just out of morbid curiosity that I would inquire further. But the last part of the sentence is that after the ampersand that says request a status and request a date on investigator's report, what I would like to, the board to give me permission to do is to ask in writing, the investigator as to the status and as to, if they had any understanding of when it would, it would be released. So that would be the only two questions that I would, that I would proffer to the investigator is green.
I would say, I don't know, you know, I don't think it's, the status is gonna be, why don't you just request a date, a date on, on a potential report?
Okay.
Does that work?
That sounds fun. So as a matter of fact, if you'd like, I can type it up right now. All right, so do I have the?
You wanna type it up right now?
Yeah, I can, I can send it right there, too. And then you can, you can, maybe call the video here. CG, I mean, the, um, investigation. Completion, um, 13. Oh, Don, Don went home and he, and he got back on, okay. Has asked, um, the select board is requesting a completion date or estimation of completion?
Estimation of completion, how about that?
And receipt of the report, right? Because completion and receipt of it are two different things.
Estimation.
I, I think you should ask for a, a clear date when you will get this report. Because they're, they're being a bit cagey. They should be able to give you a date. It's a reasonable request.
Yeah, the last time though, well, they seem to be requesting an estimation of completion, completion and receipt.
If nothing else, you could point out that the select board was directed to investigate and they were given funding at the last annual town meeting. We're now approaching a year down meeting. It would be awfully good to be able to do that town meeting, be able to say that the investigation was completed.
Yeah, no, well, you know, I, I, I mean, if, if it takes longer than than even now, but we'll, if it takes longer than that, I would, you know, we could certainly follow. So I just wrote, good evening, Ms. Green. The select board is requesting an estimation of completion and receipt of the investigation and report for Monterey? Just in case she's got many other reports working. Thank you. Can you just CC me on that, please? I will CC, I'm John. I will CC both.
That's the rules.
Yes. Chair, so we're doing this in session, so is that, is that, that's okay? I'm sending an email to, to all three members while we're in session, right? Here, okay. I wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to CC you, I'm gonna CC John. Okay, I'm gonna look up. Okay, Senator Carolyn, the, 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 Justin Miko, Don Wangle, Steve, investigation. Select board is requesting an estimation of completion and receipt of the investigation report from Monterey. Thank you.
What about, is your question an estimated date?
Estimated date of completion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that matters, but to me-
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Date of completion and receipt of the investigation. Yeah, okay, I'm sending it. So in, as part of this meeting, I did-
I agree, I'll agree to send that.
Okay, so I, I make a motion to send it to-
Second.
I go, yes?
Yes.
To the, okay, so I make the motions. Oh, I'm sorry. Comments, questions for the public? Come on, you know, you wanna say something? No? No, all right.
One other item would just be the master plan, is the RFP.
We did not get any responses. So the planning board at their next meeting will discuss putting it out again.
And I get confused with the law, with the procurement and such. Did they put it out with a, with a, with a number of money? Or were they asked, how does it work?
I believe it said what we have for funds and yes.
And so is there any understanding of why they didn't?
No, lower mentee was gonna contact BRPC to find out what happened, why they didn't.
Cause there was a priest, well, huh.
Yeah, and I believe there was, when I looked last time, there was a few people that had requested the, the RFP online, so whether people just forgot the date when it was due or-
But there were zero.
Zero.
So, but the money is kind of fixed unless we ask town meeting for more money.
Right.
And it's what, 30,000?
It's a 30 or 40, I think it was like 40.
Okay, huh, well, I don't know if that was the ma, the proposed master plan discussion, but and then do you wanna, I think the executive session to, to, to approve, to think about approval of the minutes of 32 and 39 and 10 4.
Can I ask a question? Do you have any additional counsel advice on that? Because otherwise it doesn't make sense to go in right now to create another set of minutes when you guys aren't going to agree on-
Yeah, but there are two other, is there two other?
39 is today, so that wouldn't happen.
Right.
And 32, we have time.
So I'm just saying, we're sort of making one more set of minutes. If nothing is gonna change on the other one, why?
Then we, then we would have, we have 32 here somewhere, right?
I ha, I have the executive session over here, cause I didn't want them to be public.
Can we, if we have no, this is the old debate, can we approve them about, without going into executive session, if we agree on them or that, that, that messes the whole thing up?
It does, but you, so I didn't send these because you both had changes in them. So in order to review each other's changes, in case you added anything that was, that's executive session material. I mean, you have time to do it. I'm just suggesting rather than us making another set of minutes, your call completely.
Maybe we should put it at the beginning of the agenda.
We can, we can do that. We can try to do that. Seems like, yeah, seems like, yeah.
Give me these to take with you.
Okay, so that being that, um-
Are there any followers?
I asked if the public wanted to say anything, but nobody, nobody wanted to say anything, so.
Good job, guys.
Yes, yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Good luck tomorrow, Susan.